Okay. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:32. Hi, Kim in the corner.
Thank you. It's nice to see you.
I don't have anything to add to the agenda tonight. So I think we can move right ahead to comments from the public. Colin, I assume you're not here to comment. Then let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody need to pull anything from the consent agenda? All right, then I'll entertain the motion now. We approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of October 3rd and approval of the warrants. Okay, Andre made the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. So let's move right into our presentation. Beth, do you want to frame that up to you? Do you need to frame that up?
I can do it.
Okay, great.
So we have Erin and Dylan here to present the district management group and the information, the report that they did around special education. So you were sent the report. I know it's long. We tried to get it to you quickly. We had to get draft off of it was one of the slower processes to get it to you. So hopefully you have a chance to read, at least skim through it. We will take questions. If the questions get so much, we're very willing, Erin and Dylan, to take the questions back with them and then get you answers right back, so.
And if the questions are easily answerable and we feel like it's right in line, but you may have some deeper questions that you want to ask, we want to be responsive to that. It is a pretty deep report. We have a copy of the presentation that we can hand out, in case you want to take some notes.
And does everybody know Erin or one or the other?
Yes.
Should we stand? So yeah, so we can see everyone.
Yes, and this is the mic for our 10, so.
Yeah, it's just good.
Well, the first thing that you will notice is that the title is actually EWSD expanding and strengthening best practices supports for struggling students. So one of the benefits of this report and of the study that was done is it was on our support service system outside of just special education. So we're gonna, you probably saw that when you looked at the report and we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight, is that the process was designed to look holistically at our support system for struggling learners, whether students were on an IEP or not.
And tonight, what we'll do is we'll just begin with an overview of the process that we went through. We will talk a little bit about the key highlights from your whole leadership team who has reviewed the report. We'll talk with you tonight about the really specific, more specific takeaways that Dylan and I had for next steps. We are going to talk with you about the connection between the Essex Westford Needs Assessment and the DMG, the district management group, report as a part, but not the whole, but a part of that needs assessment. And we'll talk with you about next steps. This is not the first time you'll hear about this report. This is our first opportunity to engage you on the depth of the report. There are many next steps to come and we can talk further about what next steps might need to be with the board versus stakeholder groups. And so we can talk a little bit about that as well at the end of the presentation. So.
We wanted to.
How did we advance slide? Is there a keyboard that I can just use? Whoops. Sorry, technology glitch.
There we go.
Okay. So this was the agenda that I just reviewed with all of you. And now Dylan's going to talk a little bit about the study process for EWSD.
So this slide, I'm not going to read every bullet, but what it does is it outlines the process that we use. And so this slide is to give you an appreciation that this was a thoughtful and long process that involved a grant application early on. So Erin and I worked with our respective superintendents at the time to write, to apply for a grant to support this work. So the Agency of Education funded the lion's share of the cost, but our district also did support this financially. Once we applied and we were accepted, we of course communicated that with the board and with the public. You probably remember it was in the Essex Reporter. We shared the news with our leadership and the other stakeholders involved in the system. The first step that DMG did is they collected, they talked at length with Erin and I and they collected some data in terms of how many students were receiving support services in what we call tier two, as well as tier three, so struggling learners in and outside of special education. They also wanted information on our staff and staffing across the district. And we were really, really thoughtful. We knew that this was going to straddle us as to, as different districts and emerge, and then becoming a merge district. So we were really thoughtful around our conversations with them early on and we asked them to respect the fact that we historically have been separate, but that we were moving together. And so that's one of the reasons they organized the report the way they did in terms of talking about CCSU and ETSD and those types of things. But we did want to respect the fact that there were some differences. But when it comes to recommendations, we wanted to move forward in a coherent way. So after we gave them the data and we made clear to them around how we wanted them to structure the work, they did conduct focus groups, which was a nice thing to do to get the qualitative data. And so they met with administrators, curriculum directors, special educators, academic interventionists, PARAs, parents. So they really involved a lot of stakeholders to collect a wealth of information. They then took the quantitative approach and they did what's called the time documentation. And so they have a computer program. All the folks providing support services to kids, whether it's specialized or not, entered in data in their time documentation to identify how they were spending their day, how many kids they were working, what were they doing throughout the day? How large was the group? What skills were they working on? So when you see the data in the report that sort of gives you that level of analysis, it's gotten largely from the time documentation data that was collected. Of course, once they collected the quantitative and qualitative data, they did an analysis, they drafted a report, they shared it with, at the time, Beth, I think you had just come on board and they shared it with Beth and Erin and I. We went back and forth a few times to clear up a few points. We asked for some clarification and then what you have here is the finished product to date after that process was done. And so again, that's just to give you an appreciation that it wasn't just a quick survey or even just a walkthrough, but it was a combination of data sources to get to where we are today.
And anytime you bring in an entity that's not part of you, you have to help them understand and who you are and how you do your work. And so there was a good amount of that and I feel like the DMG has been a great collaborator in this process and very responsive to a lot of the suggestions that we provided. So any questions about the study process? You probably, some of this is a review for many of you, right? Okay. Next, what we'd like to do is talk a little bit about the review from your leadership team. So all of the school leaders and district leaders came together, did a full read of the report and analyzed the tests during a meeting together. We were able to really think about the topics that we felt strongly about, that we agreed with, things we were questioning, and so, and also pieces of the report that we aspired to as a group. And so out of that, it felt important to share with you some of the perspectives that came from that meeting. The first and foremost, the aspiration that came forward most strongly was that we really want all students to receive accessible and high-quality first instruction. And so as we think about first instruction, we're thinking about the classroom teacher and the service, the instructional delivery that happens in the classroom and making sure that no matter where a student may enter at any point, that they have a high-quality access to good first instruction. And that was a really critical feature of what our leadership team felt was an important part of the report. We also, and in connection with that, wanted to have a systemic approach that is flexible and diverse and responsive to student needs. So while we want to recognize entry points into first instruction, we also want to design a system that is nimble and able to be flexible and address individual student needs, but also in a systemic way. So you can see how those two things, you know, if you were to build systems, student by student, that doesn't work. We really need to think about this systemically, but also consider all students in that process. And then in reference to our beliefs and values, making sure that our best practices are highly aligned with those. And so that will, we'll talk a little bit more about that as we relate this report into our needs assessment that is connected to all of the visioning work that's been going on across the school district.
Another outcome of our meeting, of our work with leadership was what we are agreeing to do moving forward. And you'll see there's some, certainly some overlap with what Erin just said, but there are some clear points that I wanted to, we wanted to hit on as well. And that is that we need our resources and interventions to be targeted and aligned with first instruction. And what we mean by that is instead of just saying, hey, Erin's going to go to get extra help in reading this block, but we need to be more precise than that. And we need to first identify what is it, what aspects of reading is Erin struggling with? And then how are we designing an intervention that targets that specific skill? And that's also connected to what's being taught in the classroom. So we have a lot of folks working really hard, but there's not always that clear connection to first instruction and there's not always the level of targeted intervention that we feel like our kids need. And that was a shared agreement that, in a direction we need to go in. Also, all leaders and teachers attitudes and abilities matter. And what I mean by this, this isn't about getting the right interventionist or the right special educator. This is about us all working collectively around first believing in ensuring that we're designing instruction that's accessible to our kids, that we have the belief that all kids can learn, and that we all contribute to closing the achievement gap, not a specialist by themselves or a special educator by themselves. And that was a common agreement for, from our leadership. Scheduling is huge and the deployment of resources is huge. As we've grown as a district, the beauty is we have a lot of resources, but we need to be very intentional around their deployment and part of that ties into the schedule. The master schedule within a school day, as well as, you know, even thinking outside the box, I think we'll have to start looking at what does a school day look like for students? And how do we close the achievement gap? And that's some more progressive thinking that I think we could partake in as we move forward. And then this last bullet connects with some of what Erin said and up here too, but we really feel like, we know we're a really good district. We know that we serve a lot of students well, but we also know that anywhere between 30 to 35, 40% of our students sometimes appear to need extra support. And that's not sustainable to hire enough interventions, interventionists to support 40% of our kids. And we need to circle back to first instruction. And as we've done our needs assessment and some of the work thus far, there's a shared agreement amongst leadership that this is where we need to focus on. And if we jump to talking about what our interventionists and special educators do without doing this, we won't have a sustainable model moving forward.
Questions about concepts shared by the leaders of EWSD in reference to the report? Can we just keep going and then ask questions at the end? So this next section gets into a little bit more detail. These were the takeaways that Dylan and I developed together as we consumed the report from our roles. And you will hear a good amount of overlap with some of the agreements that took place with the leaders. And interestingly, we didn't share this with our leadership team until after the leaders collectively developed their thoughts. So that was a way for us to test whether or not, as we consume the report, were we accurate as the whole group thought collectively. And one of our first takeaways was specific to this issue of first instruction that we've talked about. And so again, that was something that came forward very clearly for us. Another takeaway for us was about the very clear direction in the report that additional support requires extra time. That was something that you will have seen throughout the report and talking about the importance of scheduling and making sure that students who need additional instruction above and beyond high-quality first instruction have additional time for that to happen. And then it doesn't take over first instruction, that is in addition to. And so talking about making sure that we are systemic in our scheduling, the idea of people scheduling time in an autonomous way inside of a school building does not sort of extract the potential efficiencies that might come from high-quality scheduling processes and reworking those to make sure that professionals are engaged in work that makes sense around alignment. And oftentimes, students do not get the recommended amount of time consistently in addition to core instruction right now. So while we may have additional time for students, that's not supplanting their first instruction, it might not be the recommended amount of time that's necessary to close the achievement gap. So that was something else. You know, despite the availability of tier two instruction, and when I use the term tier two, I'm talking about students who are not eligible for special education but need additional support above and beyond the first, that quality first instruction, that right now it's not flexible enough to accommodate all of the emerging needs. And it goes back to the point that Dylan was making about 40% of kids and trying to fit, you know, 40% of your kids into a tier two system, which is why we really need to kind of rethink that piece. And so ensuring that intervention blocks are systemically identified in all schools. And so there's some work to do around the scheduling pieces. And the leaders agree that this is something that, and leaders have worked on this, I want to be clear. There's been some very intentional scheduling work inside of our schools through the MTSS conversations that we've had. Some of you have heard me refer to this before, but there's still more to do and we're not done with that. So those were some of the takeaways.
And some of our other points on this slide are actually very consistent with the MTSS framework as well. So if you're familiar with that framework, you know, I wish Erin and I could take credit for all these ideas, but they're pretty consistent with that framework. And we sort of applied it to this report too. And that's just the, you know, a good database decision-making when it comes to referring students for interventions. That's critical. And I think now that we've merged, we have a history of some great things occurring, but we have a history of some very different things occurring. And so how do we come up with a common assessment plan that makes sense to help identify those students who need some extra support? And how do we have clear entrance criteria and exit criteria for students so that we have a system that's dynamic and flexible that can meet the needs? We also want to make sure kids don't fall through the cracks. So I know in Essex Town, one of the outcomes of the focus group was that we had criteria for kids to work with interventionists and we had criteria for special education. Then you had a group of students that kind of fell in between and nobody kind of knew who was to work with them. And we need to make sure that we obviously don't develop a system that has holes in it. We need to be clear about the research interventions and research-based delivery regarding push-in and pull-out. And so we have a variety of instructional programs and approaches that people use. Some of those approaches are evidence-based and some are probably things that folks are just more familiar with because of past training that may or may not have as much merit. And so as a leadership team, we need to be responsible for supporting and identifying those programs that we're going to support from a budget standpoint, support from a professional learning standpoint, and then from a supervision and evaluation standpoint. And that's, this is going to give us an opportunity as a leadership team to look at those approaches. I think last, we also, you know, lastly here at this point around the high school is we have a great high school, but we still are somewhat traditional in terms of our course offerings and how we offer differentiated approaches for kids. And so instead of kind of different courses that can track students, we need to look at ways to offer support remediation within the context of a course without tracking. And that's, clearly there's an opportunity there and I think this report spoke to that a bit.
This is the last slide of our takeaways. There were a ton of them. Number six is making sure that students are supported by individuals who are most skilled in their area of need. As you think about the connection with that master scheduling topic and also you think there are some rules and regulations actually that sometimes get in the way of this as well. So, you know, when you think about a student who's in special education, they have a, we have a legal obligation to serve them with a special educator and yet there might be a literacy interventionist who, that might be a better person to provide that service. And then also, our systems and how we build those schedules and create those groups with data-driven decision-making, we need to incorporate thinking about the match between the professional and the student's need more intentionally. We need to dig a little deeper in how we're using PARAs and become more intentional about their use and the outcome measures around that. That's definitely something that we took away. We need to make sure that we have high-quality universal focus on behavioral expectations and really develop a whole system approach to behavior and that training is a primary tool around this. That was something certainly that came up in our leadership team is thinking about social emotional learning and what that looks like across the system and the importance of that and the role that readiness to be a learner plays in your learning trajectory. The research is pretty clear about that and so it's certainly important. Shifting away from special education and intervention is what students need if they're struggling to we are all experts in closing achievement gaps and have a role to play. You know, moving away from this, this isn't working for this student, who might be able to resolve that into it's a collective. And that's a really important concept to take away. And then lastly, this group size issue. So one of the things that I knew, Dylan and I both knew going into this is that there would be a conversation about the number of kids in groups and the efficiencies or lack of efficiencies that are happening, given the size of the groups. And out that came, right, you saw it in the report, that there are a number of students who are served one-to-one. And a huge part of that is about scheduling. It's not because a student requires a singular one-to-one service. They might in the IEP say small group, but the other student that has that similar need is in a different grade and has reading at the time that this student has an available time to group them. And so that's where master scheduling comes in and thinking collectively about how we use our resources and where kids are and how we might be able to build the group size is something that we definitely need to visit. And again, we knew that that was something that would come out of this as we moved into it. So those are the takeaways that Dylan and I created and you can see the alignment between those and what came out of the leadership team. And again, this is our first set of takeaways, leadership's first set of takeaways that we're presenting tonight. It certainly isn't the end.
But this report is very timely because as a new district, we are doing a needs assessment to look at, you know, the direction that we need to head. And so we conceptualize this as an important data point. It's an important perspective and we want to use it as we do a needs assessment and identify priorities moving forward. This is also, as I mentioned earlier, it's clearly aligned with MTSS, which is a direction that the state is continuing to support schools move. And I know it's a direction that each district has embraced in the past. And so this provides, I think, more evidence of why we should adopt that framework moving forward.
So next steps. We need to provide a copy of the report to the support services professionals in the system. We actually sent them an email today letting them know this presentation was happening and that once we presented to you all and to leadership that we would be providing a copy to them. Dylan and I have engaged in eliciting people who are interested in being teacher leaders around support services and have a nice, healthy list of people who are interested in volunteering to do that work. And so they will help us in thinking about the DMG report. We'll need to think about other stakeholders across the system, leaders and teachers. And the DMG has a great sort of rollout Gantt chart that you can use to help think about how you use these reports in the system and how they can be helpful in the process. We will also be developing an action plan out of that group or action steps and thinking specifically, what, you know, what do we need to take on first? How will we do that? What will those actions be? And then we will look to weave those action steps into the continuous plan for improvement that will need to be submitted to the state and is a regular part of our improvement planning process as a school district. And then we'll need to report back to people as we continue with this work on an ongoing basis. So, you know, sometimes you need anchors. And for us, this will be one of our anchors. And we will be able to move from here and then reassess, thinking about, here's where we were, where are we now? And we'll then do some more planning and now where are we, right, across time? And then reporting back, the presentation specific to the report references during the budget process as we plan the budget will, I'm sure, reference this and then again during continuous improvement planning. So that is the plan moving forward around how this report will interact with the work you all do, the work we're doing as a leadership team, the work that our schools are doing in reference to their own planning. So that concludes the presentation and I think we have time for some questions. So you all had an opportunity to interact with the report. You've now heard from us a little bit about our interpretation. Is there anything you'd like to add as far as your interpretation or ask us questions about the report? So the floor's open, yeah?
I have two questions that I think are at a high enough level to maybe get answered. One is that when they're looking at what the current practice is, there is a lot of mention of a push-in co-teaching model. And at one point, there was a footnote that said that that is not best practice. And then it was also mentioned that what people described as a co-teaching model, I think it was in the town, didn't match with the definition of co-teaching model in research. It was something else. So I wondered if we could get a little bit of clarification because I know when I toured schools in Essex Town last year, I heard a lot about how they were changing their system of support delivery to involve like people teamed with each other between teachers and special educators. And I was just wondering what we actually were doing and what the right name is for it and stuff like that.
I can speak a little bit to that since I'm more familiar with that. So one shift we did structurally in the town was, instead of having a special educator assigned to five, up to nine teachers last year, they may be working with students across nine different classrooms, we changed the structure to assign one, a special educator to three to four teachers. So that provided them the ability to team in a more concentrated way. And then it also helped with scheduling because you're not trying to juggle the schedule of nine different teachers. Along with that, there were a number of folks that were interested in co-teaching. And so we did contract with Rich Villa to do some professional development, who's continued this year. Part of his work is to talk about how you, as a special educator and classroom teacher, can work together to support kids. The other, more important part of that work is how do you differentiate and design instruction so it's accessible to kids? And so part of the professional learning we did with Rich was around what does co-teaching look like when it's done well? What are different models? And then also, what does it look like to differentiate and design? And of the 44 people we had participate, I think we had the 28 were regular educators, which was great. Because a lot of times you do these types of trainings and you get all the special educators going and you don't get as many of the regular educators. We asked a clarification for Megan, who was our point person with DMG around that. And her point is well-taken. She says, what we found with co-teaching is it's hard, it's not that it's not a, that it's a bad thing to do, but it's hard to do it well to scale. And what I mean is, because it also takes the right match professionally with the two people that want to work together. It takes dedicated co-planning time. It takes time to develop the relationship and then the understanding of the content on both parts. And so it can be done well, but it's not an easy thing to do well and that they generally don't recommend it as a first approach because of that. Was one of the reasons she was hesitant.
And I also, as we were consuming, I felt the same way. Like I was like, are you saying that that's what should happen? As I see this repeated over and over again in the report, Dylan and I talked about it and we asked that question. And her perspective when she reported back to us, which resulted in that footnote, was that it's not really which model, whether you use co-teaching or you use a push-in model or you use a pull-out model. It's that the instruction is targeted and aligned with research and aligned with first instruction and is in addition to first instruction. So she, the DMG did not fall in any one particular place around a specific model of service delivery. So, she she, the DMG did not fall in any one particular place around a a specific model of service delivery. Essex Town has done that work and I I don't um, you know, I won't tell the whole story of CCSU. There's uh another story there that is similar, right? Very, very similar, actually. It happened a while ago, we have some o- the some pockets of co-teaching. I think the question for us is, how is it that we ensure whatever model is taking place or whatever kind of, wherever the instruction is? How do we make sure that it hits those tenants that we know are critical to improve achievement? Um so that was my, our takeaway.
Yeah, and my and my other point to that, and I think they spoke to this, is there were, there are people that push in and they say, oh, I'm co-teaching. And if, when you learn about co-teaching, that's, just being in that location isn't co-teaching. And I think that was their point is, some people may use that word term pretty casually, um and they're not actually doing it. And that was part of the training with Rich was, what does it actually look like? There's four different models. There's one model that's very ineffective and that's to go in and just support the teacher and support a kid. Oh, he looks like he needs help, you know? That that's a called supportive model, but the research doesn't show that that's effective at all. And so, um but we had people probably that's just used the word casually because they were pushing into a classroom. And when they were asked follow-up questions, it was clear they didn't have the co-planning, they didn't have the content expertise. And so they weren't really doing co-teaching.
Probably if they were asked now, they'd have a different answer.
Yeah.
Yes, after the training, yeah.
And part of the training we did with Rich is we we have trained several coaches.
Yeah.
Uh we've se- we've trained several coaches to help make it sustainable. So I actually think we have, um I think what we've done is developed a way to get at first instruction. That necessarily wasn't the intention of everybody going into it in terms of, but I think that's what the outcome is, is that the teachers and some of the administrators that sat through that were like, this is first instruction. This is, this is really good stuff.
And Westford participated in that. We paired and uh Westford was interested in participating and just is raving about the work that was done in that um professional development experience. Although not because, oh, now I know how to co-teach. It's more about what Jill- Dylan just talked about.
Right.
Um and um and it especially in reference to designing universal experiences that are accessible at different entry points for students. So every student is having a meaningful learning experience at all times. Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Um.
So you're just doing that.
Um. The student expect from one utilizing the present model versus the changing model. But but I guess what impact would this have on the student? Because obviously the student's accustomed to one model and then we're um gonna be changing the model. So I guess I'm looking at the impact on going from old to new?
Well, it, as we start to talk about model changes, um it may or may not change an individual student's experience um through who they work with or the amount of time or both, or the instructional materials that they're interacting with. Um it could be any or all of those as we think about the topics that we're discussing. Um and I, I mean, I feel like our kids are really resilient and adaptive to change like that, where they'll experience one instructor and, oh, you know, you're going to now work in this group. Um but certainly, we want to be sensitive to that. So if that change, that we, if we implemented a change for a student and we feel like that relationship is so critical, that severing that relationship is actually going to decrease the learning trajectory, we need to do that differently. I mean, I really think it's student by student and there's uh, that's the only real answer to that question. Because it just depends on the needs of the student. I don't know if you.
Yeah, I think it's important to be sensitive to that.
Yeah.
For sure. I also think it's important to be sensitive to the the achievement gap that continues to exist in the f- in in this area. Not just for us, but across the country. And so we do, I think we do need to change and be sensitive in doing that. But we need to do something different because what we've done thus far um is not, is not closing the achievement gap to the extent that we're putting resources and time and energy into it.
Okay, uh my question is, with the implementation of personal learning plans, um all students in essence will have an IEP. So, how will struggling readers be accommodated if they do not qualify for tier one or tier two or any other special ed supports? The report, um the the follow-up to that, the report notes that kindergartners are being um assessed as needing help. But then it goes on to say that those supports aren't applied until first grade. So, and and it also denotes that early intervention is absolutely the best, which we all know that early intervention is always the best. So, there's your question, your two questions.
Um, one of the things I want to say is that uh that particular phrase around first grade is one I pushed back on several times and didn't end up coming out of the report. The um, there is intervention that takes place in kindergarten across all the schools. That does take place. Um there was a specific conversation, I think, about first grade with a group of first-grade teachers that resulted in this sort of statement um that was interesting. I I also want to reflect that some of the data that is in this report um was generated through focus forums and is perception data. So, that that's important to note. That said, early intervention is critical. And thinking about how we align our resources to provide early intervention um i- is important. What we know about reading is that by third grade, it's very important to be reading on grade level. Um and that's a critical focus. And I mean, if there was anything that if we had uh Megan, who was our our point person, standing here, what she would say over and over is, you need to focus on literacy. Early literacy is critical. And if you can get that, you will see your achievement gaps close. That is definitely the perspective that DMG holds. And so, they are recommending that it is a strong focus for us in reference to resource allocation.
And I think also the strong point that comes out is that double dipping. So maybe that's not happening consistently across the district now and that might be what that's referring to too. There is definitely, you need your first instruction. And for struggling read- readers, they need even be- more beyond that. So, I think that that's one thing that really.
I'm kind of Brendan and then Liz, did you, no. Brendan and I can tell you're there.
I have two questions, but if my first question is too annoying, we can go down. So, um one of the highlights that you you indicated in your presentation is that is to develop first instruction that is meaningful and accessible to all students. So, I'm trying to uh translate that. It sounds to me as if that means that uh classroom teachers will need to receive some level of evaluation and professional development in terms of becoming more adept at providing quality first instruction for this particular area of interest. So how, how are you gonna get at that?
Well, I think that's, that's a good point and that's what's getting, when we talk about the needs assessment and our action plan, that's why I think our leadership is focusing on first instruction. So our, we've said like, we need to invest time and resources into quality first instruction. What does that l- look like? Um and our focus can't be solely on the tier two and tier three, but it needs to be there. So I think we should, we'll develop a, uh I know we'll develop a plan to to address that. I think it also relates to behavior. Um I was at a great conference this last week um around PBIS. And they talked about, the research is really clear. The best way to prevent behavior pro- problems is really good first instruction where that kids can engage in and they feel like that they can access. And so, the the training we did with Rich was one example of that. Like, and he talked a lot about, okay, you've got these fifteen kids in your class and this is, these are the levels they're at, here's the concept you want to teach. How can you make this accessible to all fifteen? Not to thirteen of them. And then you hope somebody's gonna work with the other two, but all fifteen. And so, real focused um professional development around that. And then, I think the other piece is, you got, you asked about his his supervision and evaluation around, how do you, how do you monitor that and hold people accountable around?
Right. Yeah, I mean, are teachers able to opt out of
I would say no.
Of improving in this area?
I mean, I've been saying lately, I probably said this five times in the last two weeks. Imagine if every student all day experienced expectations that were challenging but that they could meet at all times around their learning. Um and I, you know, I know that's a lofty goal. But I completely agree and I uh with Dylan. And I do think that a number of the cha- emo- social emotional challenges we experience is about sense of belonging and ability to engage. And sometimes embarrassment associated with challenges that students may be having. Um that's certainly not all of it, but it's a part of it. And so, this is a way to talk about some of those issues and a report that will help us move that forward because it's clearly important and it's important to all of the leaders across the entire system. So, I s- I feel like that really is, speaks loud and clear.
And the data that you received from Amy about our demographics and and the classroom and who we have in classrooms certainly has changed over time. Um and not necessarily in every classroom has instruction changed over time. So, it's a really important time that we all engage in professional development to meet the needs of all students. I, and you know, when I started teaching twenty-five years ago, the classrooms looked a lot different than now. And I could teach one lesson and most kids got it.
I.
You know, it's just.
I do want to say that teachers in the system are working incredibly hard. I, it's really important that we don't leave this conversation feeling negatively about the work teachers are doing in our system. It's incredible. And sometimes there is a need for um professional development around how to do something differently.
And learning about social and emotional learning too. We don't have those strategies. They're not taught to us in college and how to deal with it.
I agree with what you just said and I and I know that there's a lot of demands on teachers. So I, I think that can be overlooked. Um am I allowed to ask my second question?
Sure.
Okay. Um so, you've sort of tipped your hand a little bit about the budget implications of implementing this plan. Since we are responsible ultimately for the fiscal health uh and and selling the the eventual budget, can you give, can you see in your crystal ball what budget implications this might have or areas of the budget that we might need to be thinking about now so that we can start planning for the future?
I mean, I would um start by saying that uh we are just consuming this report and it's important um n- not to go to decisions just yet in that way. I also think that this will help us um effectuate res- um implement resources in a way that is uh more efficacious to the system. It will benefit the system more if we pay attention to some of the things we need to do here. Whether or not it's going to save money or ask for additional resources, I'm I'm not ready to predict that at this point. I feel like we need to go through a quality budget process with these pieces in mind, thinking about the future. That said, um you know, we did just complete the services plan. We're talking about the special education budget and the support services budget going forward. Um and it is a sizable amount of money that we spend. And so, thinking about how we leverage those resources as opposed to adding more resources, something we certainly recognize as an expectation um that we, that's really how we are coming to think about it at this point. Um but I know, I don't know that I have more to offer than that. How about you?
No, I think we have some work to do. I I think conceptually, the um the more we can invest in in what, the first part of your qu- there your first question in terms of increasing um teacher, you know, supports for teachers in terms of being um uh highly effective at addressing needs of students. I think the more we can invest there, then um the better we'll be off in the long run. And then we need to look at how we, how we find that way to invest.
So I I appreciate um the fact that it's early and so.
Yeah, certainly.
But I also appreciate the fact that you talked about, can we work with the resources that we already have to um sort of effectuate some of these these changes and improvements? Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that, you know, this is not just a transition, but there's some transformation in this, so it's not overnight.
Right.
So this will be a a process in which we may want to look at the totality of resources over a period of years and understand how those reinvestments can end up, where there might be spikes, but then valleys and kind of looking at it in the duration that it's gonna take to do responsibly, rather than just one twelve-month snapshot at a time.
That's good. I've got Al and then Kiwi and then Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Just a couple of thoughts. I would be very interested in what DM has to say about master scheduling uh applications uh in terms of recommendations for a school that is scaled to our size. Point number two, at the previous presentation, the part that was absent for me was the non-proficient grouping of students for all the way through this, different classes in all of our different schools. And that information really, from the non-proficient, we can then break out the non-proficient pieces and understand how big of a problem or a need exists. Because right now, I don't have that view. This is a, this is a much larger school district now.
The data uh from the ESBC um around proficiency for students who are eligible for special education is really quite low. Um and that is certainly deeply concerning for us. Those numbers have stayed low for quite some time. Um the variability between the prior Essex Town s- uh district and the and prior CCSU schools is actually not all that different. Our scores are, have been quite similar for a long time. Um we do perform better than state average, but given the percentages, I, for me, that's like, well, okay. Right, uh because the the uh achievement gap is so significant. Um and I do think it was one of the reasons that we felt this report was so important to engage in because it does focus on practices, best practices, to address uh students who are struggling. And um you know, we have both spent our entire careers trying to change those data points. And so, uh certainly feel the the uh passion around that with you. Yeah, for sure.
The the bullet on the next step that I don't see is the priorities. Uh in the next step, there should be some priorities of.
Like content, you mean?
Well, how, where we're we're going to put continuous improvement efforts at to start. What are the most important? We talked about grade three reading, uh because that carries all the way through. But there may be other areas as well.
I think the prioritizing comes within creating that continuous improve. So what we received from, I consider it a lot of data in that report, right? And to create that continuous improvement plan, we need that data and that's one piece of it. And we do need to prioritize, but that will come in the process of that continuous improvement plan.
The other thing I looked for in this report were outcomes. And I didn't see a whole lot of discussion about outcomes for specific.
It's up to us.
Well.
Well, and I mean, I agree. I think that would be helpful and might be some feedback for us to provide to the DMG to begin with our present outcomes as sort of part of the picture of who we are.
Right, right.
So that we're t- we're clear, that so that when they write a report, they're clear about what outcomes they're trying to impact. Um I gave you that in sort of a, you know, three-sentence blurb a couple minutes ago. Um but I I certainly agree that that could be an enhancement to their process.
Last point. I read this report a couple of times and I took my time. And there was one huge difference between ET and CCSU in terms of the numbers and qualifications between the special educators and the paraeducators. There are substantial differences in the numbers. Yet, when I was on the high school board, I can tell you, Rob Irvin would tell me, there's no significant difference in the outcomes at the high school. But we've apparently got two different systems that are consuming different resources in order to get to the same point.
I'd just say, yeah, there's a lot of metrics to look at. We actually, when we did our service plan last year, Aaron and I did our service plans differently. And we looked at, you know, in isolation, well, you have more paras and I have more of this. But when we actually looked at per pupil expenditure for kids on IEPs, we were, it was more consistent. And so.
And, you know, yeah, agreed. Um when you look at the total ADM count, there was also variation in eligibility rates between the systems. There were a lot of differences that we are continuing to. There were a lot of differences that we are continuing to work to streamline. And I think um for Dylan and I, one of the things we're really working on is moving forward. What are our common practices to then have the data flow into a more common frame? Um, trying to look backwards and say, well, what did the system do? What do we need to change here and here? And do we need to reallocate? We have done some reallocation between the systems to even out the resources a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, but we are really trying to move forward to say, what is in the best interest of the Essex Westford School District? And how do we, I mean, we just had a meeting with our, all of our pre-K teachers today, right? Collectively and um thinking holistically about preschool and early childhood special education together for the fir- you know, for the first time. And so it's exciting work, but we're very early. I mean, I think Brian's points are w- really well taken around thinking forward and the time that it takes for a, an entity with four thousand students and a thousand employees to um sort of uh calibrate around our practices and come together around our vision. I mean, you know, that, that's definitely part of this for sure.
Good, thank you.
Kim.
Um, I think it was Brendan who picked up on the theme about um reallocation of current staffing um to make the best use of people's um strengths. And I had noticed, I think it was on page thirty-six, um, that the people who are specialists in behavior, um like guidance counselors, they're spending a tiny proportion of their time actually working with students on their behavior. I was like, what are they doing?
Right.
Like, are they doing paperwork for the other two-thirds of their time? And then I realized, oh, earlier in the report, it said that basically everyone in the entire school district is spending half their time teaching reading. And so if it would be better to have the behavior specialists working with people on behavior and the reading specialists working with people on reading and just, it means that they have to swap how things are currently scheduled because people are picking up whatever they can, this can work great. The challenge is probably getting everyone to buy in. I feel like within the system, we probably have like really good grasp on where those strengths and weaknesses are. But understanding what steps are gonna be taken to get everyone to say, yes, I understand that this is gonna free me up from doing something that isn't my strong suit for half of my time to do what I'm really good at. Like, how do we make that happen?
I mean, I don't, I wanna say first that uh the behavior specialists um that we're working with are not teaching reading half the time. And so the report, as we, I know what you're, exactly why you're saying that.
I think it's just like categories of people with training and the behavior.
The, the report, this is what I mean when I said earlier, trying to get an external agency to understand how you do your work. And so there are pieces of this that can be a little hard to interpret because it's not, there's not a specific um description of program, if you notice. It's like, what did we learn from the focus groups? But you didn't have like an overview of, this is how the services are provided, this is what people are doing. Um, that said, I do think that we need to think about the skills that we want people to have, what they have now and then how we wanna use them systemically. And scheduling is a huge part of this because how we use people is dictated by the schedule that either they build for themselves or that gets built for them or some, something in between. Um, so that's a c- a critical feature of the work forward.
Hi. Just ask you a tiny thought, question. What percentage of instruction in the district is delivered by um substitute teachers? Like, are five percent of classrooms and special ed at any point covered by subs or is it smaller than that or?
Do you mean like when people are out and how many days a year substitutes are providing instruction?
Yeah.
I think that is a great question and it, I know that in, in CCSU, we just did a review of all of that data.
Well, just cause.
But I don't, I don't know what that data is for EWSD, um, but I think it's a good question and an important data point to consider.
Cause this is sort of random personal anecdote. I worked as a sub.
Yeah.
Um, you take initial online training and it's like, if you don't have expertise in something or you haven't done it for twenty years, you might wanna think about not taking that job. But then I would take a job like math at high school and I'd show up and they'd be like, okay, you have two periods of math and then you work the special education resource room and then you have math again. It's like, uh, I have zero training in my entire life on supporting the special needs students.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure this is going to work out that well for anyone. So I guess making a way for subs to have access to professional development, if you're gonna flexibly schedule them.
Yeah, we, we are going to. Yeah. We can. There's a, that's a bigger issue that we're trying to figure out.
For anyone, there's, there's not that many subs in the.
There's not that many subs and there's an issue right there.
Yeah.
And then the training for those subs that we don't have.
Train them with the bus drivers.
I've thought about you drive a bus and sub.
Just, just.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Brian, that one's cute too.
Okay. Mark, love you.
A good question. Yeah, I.
You started to answer a question I was gonna have when we met the principals at the beginning of this year. It was exciting to hear that they were excited to be learning from each other and getting time together. So I just heard you say the kindergarten, all the kindergarten teachers are now.
Pre-K.
Have met. So realistically, how do you plan for that during, how many times per year? Because people do learn better by talking and sharing strategies. S- and, cause I know the leadership team is meeting, what, every two weeks?
Formally every two weeks and one they meet in their, it's still formally, but it's not all together. They would meet in grade level spans.
Yeah.
And then the second.
Yeah, so it's almost every Wednesday.
Second part of the question is, I can't remember where in the report now, but it talked about Westford, the K through eight school uh versus the others. And there was a little um uh concern. I've gotta go back and reread it again. So how do you incorporate small staff like that and taking it out of their school if you're gonna have a team of teachers meeting? I'm just.
We've been, we've been talking about that with leadership. Um, when this report, when they really did engage thoroughly in the report, we had great discussions. And one of the discussions that we had after we went through the report was about how do we, it's had to do with professional development and teacher leaders, so to train teacher leaders who then work in professional learning communities. And then the question is, do you do that across, so all third grade teachers get together across the district, all fourth grade teachers? Um, or do you do that in school? So those are conversations we're having. I think it's really important that we do allow teachers time. I totally, that is the best professional development, learning from each other, um, and learning together. So, and that is a way to improve instruction. So whatever professional development that we take on, it's, will probably be the model of the teacher leaders and then um teachers being able to have time to get together. And I just said time and that's where, that's, will be tricky. When do we do that? You're absolutely right. And that's what, that's part of the professional development, um, enrolling that out. But we need to allow them time. The most, the best way to improve instruction is embedded professional development. And we know that and we wanna do that and the time will be important. And all teachers came together collectively to, um, during the last um early release day to do some collective uh values and beliefs work. Um, we do have structures for pre-K where they'll be meeting regularly. I think we're trying to find structures that will work. Um, but what I would say is that anytime I see teachers getting together in whatever structures, they are so excited to be together. It is awesome to see the energy, the collective energy that they have. And so um time is the issue, but the value is very clear as we're beginning to pull people together.
And then um another piece of it is however we go forward with how you do professional development, whether staff are being pulled out during the day, it brings it home to me working with uh young parents. When they see their children having a substitute versus their classroom teacher, um, certain things going on, um, they start questioning how much is their child getting out of the course. So I'm thinking of the communication piece, like when you do the staff development, if you have to do it during a school day. And I think it's good to communicate to the parents that this is going on to enhance your child's classroom. I think they need a little more detail than what they're given. Cause you know how kids go home, you get all kinds of stories, so.
Or you don't get any.
Or you don't get any, right. My son, I never got stories, so.
I think that's, that's the work we need to do in terms of what's the school calendar look like that helps support quality professional learning. Um, and then for the days that happen during school, how do we do that in a balanced way that doesn't impact instruction too much? So that's the work to do for sure. Yeah.
All right. I'd like to wrap this up. I just have a comment and a couple of questions. Um, I happened to have a conversation with a retired reading recovery teacher today. And I was really pleased to hear you say that you were gonna try to schedule students with similar issues to work in a group at the same time. Um, she said for years she pretty much worked one-on-one. But the end of her career, they started giving her groups of three or four students, all with different reading challenges. And she said, you really, she used to be able to make real progress with students. But when the model changed, when you have a half hour and you've got one kid who can't do fluency and one kid who can't decode and one kid who's having trouble with comprehension, you, you just can't be effective. So I was pleased to hear you say that. I was really struck and you clearly were too in the report with the fact that the time makes, the extra time makes such a difference. And the fact that it, in many cases is scheduled, but isn't done the way it's supposedly scheduled. So I was wondering if you had some tool that you were gonna use to keep track of whether the time is being spent the way you think it should be being spent.
Um, I think that accountability toward whatever changes we make is really important. Um, and uh that's true for um making sure that where you say double dosing is an expectation and then making sure it stays that way. Uh, that expectation was set a while ago inside of the CCSU schools and through this report seems to have dissipated some. And so it just brings back that need for making sure that we are checking and ensuring that the sort of um non-negotiables that we set sometimes for ourselves to help us do better work with kids, um, stay intact. And so that, that's important. Um, the tools to ensure that kids are grouped together well, um, based on need and also not in one-to-one situations is all about um embedding support services inside of the master scheduling process. Um, so a, in a lot of places across the country, what often happens is the master schedule will get built and the classroom teacher will build their schedule. And then the special educator or the interventionist will go and try to negotiate when they can have a student. And that's how they build their schedule. Um, there are some schools in our system who have changed that and um have been able to um address this issue through thinking about intervention scheduling as part of the master scheduling process instead of just letting it be what it's going to be. And so where you pair the concept of double dosing with the idea that we are going to master schedule intervention, um, that will create um a, an improvement in that area. And then I also think that um there's something to be said for thinking about how we build classrooms of kids and whether or not there's, there's something to think about there as well. Um, that's not something we've ever done before. Um, but thinking about two, two or three students who are reading at a, a level G, let's say, in a classroom with a teacher as opposed to one who's reading at an A and one who's reading at a C and one who's reading at an F, when everyone's supposed to be at an M. Those, th- those two things are really, uh, that's a really different experience, both for the classroom teacher, for the students. And that's just an idea. We haven't talked about that. We're still thinking about different ways to do it. Um, there's also balanced classrooms to think about and you don't wanna, you don't wanna create sort of pockets of circumstance inside of classrooms. You want um a heterogeneous classroom that is representative of our community and of life as well. So all of these things end up signa- kinda pushing on each other and we have to decide which strategies do we leverage? Which ones don't, do we leave to the side? And then which ones do we hold ourselves accountable to? Um, and, and how do we do that holistically and not in this school only or in this school only? Um, and so we have some work to do to bring our pockets of excellence into a broader practice.
I also think having strong structures in place around good data to help identify where the students are
Yes.
as well as strong and robust referral systems in terms of exit and entrance criteria around who would be in what group. Because instead of these three kids need reading, we need to be more precise than that. So I think that, that's connected as well to your point.
Yeah, and I think it would be really helpful to know if Margaret is supposed to get an extra half hour per four days a week. Did she really get it?
Right.
Because then you can tell if it made a difference in reading.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. This has been a very interesting discussion and one that will clearly continue, uh, not just this year, but over a number of years. And so good luck to you as you work on the next steps. And I know this board cares deeply about that achievement gap. And we will constantly want to hear her, what's being done to address that. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so now moving to school board business. And the next item on this, ratification of the teacher contract agreement. Yay. And um, Kim, I, I, would you or Beth, what, how do you want to handle this?
I can finish it.
Right, too, too. Yeah. She, yeah.
It was a really great body of work together with our partners from the association. Um, the teachers came, all of us, I think, ready to listen and learn from one another and really um see how we pull together a unified contract from two fairly distinct contracts. You would think they couldn't be that different, but um there's a reason it took us almost a year. So having said that and having, I think, kept you guys mostly up to speed, some of the highlights of the settlement um were the ability to get everybody onto a unified salary schedule and seniority schedule. Um, and then to arrive at a consistent number of school days. A common length of the workday will be achieved in the second year. Um, we'll be within fifteen minutes of that um in the first year. And then in the second year, the high school will end up at that seven and a half hour mark as well. Um, that is notable because in Essex Town, there was no defined workday. Um, professional expectations of course, but no defined workday. And in the CCSU contract, there were some pretty specifically defined characteristics of a workday um that was different actually from grade level to grade level within that contract even. So um that was um a very big accomplishment, um, that particular piece especially. Um, with respect to healthcare, um, the plans will remain status quo through the end, December thirty-first of this year. Um, they were um a fifteen percent contribution from Essex Town teachers and sixteen from CCSU. Those were the current premium share arrangements um coming in. And for the matter of time that was gonna be um considered for that part of the plan, it, we left those status quo. So effective January one, the teachers will contribute nineteen percent. So effective January one, the teachers will contribute nineteen percent, um, of the premium based on, and the, the premium shares that we're talking about will be based on the premium dollars for the gold CDHP plan. And the, um, that is in year one, and in year two, the teacher portion will go to twenty percent. Um, the HRA, or the Health Reimbursement Arrangement, is available under that program, and that will provide for four hundred dollars, the first four hundred dollars of out-of-pocket expenses for a single plan will be covered by the teacher. For a two-person or family plan, the first eight hundred will be covered by the teachers. The remainder of that, um, being covered by the school district. Um, that brings us fairly close to the state model. So, um, over the course of the, the, um, the term of the agreement, the, it doesn't largely represent a change in costs for teachers, nor does it, um, increase the overall cost for the district. That's because the structure of the plans have a lower premium rate. Um, so there's a similar cost structure for the teachers, not exactly the same despite the shift in premium share. Um, the benefits are largely maintained. Um, it is a different type of a plan than teachers have had in the past, but the, the benefits that are covered are largely the same. And again, we moved towards, um, very close to what the state was looking for, for the model. That, again, was particularly in that that law was coming into effect as we were trying to wrap up our agreement and negotiations. That was an especially difficult part of the work. Um, but, you know, we could come together in understanding a little bit more as the couple of months went by. And then, um, the settlement is three percent new dollars in salary for each of the two years of the contract. Um, so, I, I just say thank you. I think that, um, it was a process that really reflected an intention to, again, listen and learn together, but also to really do what we needed to do for kids within this contract that expresses our, our sort of shared values and gives us some structure to help create a unified system. Um, and we was, within that, I think we, it was very important to us that we do what we needed to do for kids, respect the professionalism of our staff, and honor the investment of our taxpayers. And I think we were able to do all of that, and we had terrific partners in our teachers to get that work done, and amazing support from our, our administration and, and our attorney. And certainly Deb really is able to bring to the table the data and information that we needed to be able to make real-time decisions. And that data and information was trusted by everybody sitting at the table, our educators included. So, I'm very grateful.
We are incredibly grateful to you, Kim, and to Brad, and to Andre, um, who were the other members of the negotiating council. But Kim is the person who spent the, by far the most time at the table thinking and working this through in a pretty collaborative way. And, um, we're very fortunate that we had you to do that work. So, um...
I will say in all honesty, it was a pleasure. I know that not all those hours felt that way. And as I can reflect back on it now, I don't, I know that's probably not something you feel always at a negotiation, but I think in reflecting, it was a pleasure.
Well, I think that, that you were able to accomplish what you did and in the way it was done has to be gratifying.
I, I just am just amazed at what we had to merge, we had to merge the contracts. I am just amazed at some of the single districts that weren't merging, and the turmoil they had over the new healthcare. And I think we are so blessed to have the board members we have, the CC, not CCSU, but Essex Town leadership.
He definitely says.
Now that we got you, Beth, and I think the, the professional staff that also was there, it's just amazing to me that this could get pulled together. And, you know, it's like, Kim, you did a great job, and Brendan and Al, I...
Andre.
Andre, sorry, Andre. But it, it actually just, um, amazes me, uh, that we could do it. Really does.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, does anyone have any other questions or comments? Then, um, I would entertain a motion that we ratified the two-year contract for the Essex Westford, um, between, negotiated between the Essex Westford Teachers Association and the Essex Westford School District. So, I'll page the motion. Okay, is there any discussion? I think probably not. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and, um, there has been a joint, he created a press release that, that, uh, I think Kim can give to folks who are here, and we will ask them to distribute it tomorrow.
I'm assuming that the Teachers Association ratified that kind of...
They ratified last week, yes, yes. I should have said that.
Just to be sure.
Yeah.
Before we celebrate.
We should have had cake or something.
Have we should. Okay, let's move on to class size, um, K three guidelines. Um, Beth wanted to bring this up today.
Sorry, a few hard copies. I don't know if you were able, does anybody need a hard copy? Okay, I'm gonna pass it down.
Oh, actually, you got color on yours. I'll take one.
Yeah, a little yellow.
Yeah.
So this was a combination, and Brian can jump in, because, um, I ended up not being able to be a part of the committee and was a part of the emails, going back and forth and looking at the, the final one. Um, so the guidelines, we're still working on the nine through twelve. That has Ben, um, Rob is working with his leadership team at the high school on those, and we don't have that yet. But this was a combination of both, um, previous districts and SU, um, admin team along with Brian and Deb that sat down to create this. So it's a great combination between, um, all of them. If you look at the optimum average per grade cluster, it's bold, and that's where, where it's optimum. Um, and so we wanted that to stand out. And just to give you a little history, the, um, Essex Town had different configurations, or that's their configurations, is the K one through three, four through five, and six through eight. My history with it, or thinking about it, I don't have a history with it. But my thinking about it, why the, um, previous CCSU was a little different is because the configurations of the schools were different, um, and then looking at the Westford, is that a good guess? All right. So that, that, we have relied, we, everybody, we went with, now that we have one district, we went with what the town had for those grade span. And we also went with the numbers that they, that they had at the town, and they were slightly off. And I, I think it's because when CCSU, looking at it, it was a K through three span, so then you take the average, and they had seventeen, where sixteen would be better for K. Um, do you wanna add to that at all differences, or how they came about as one, since I really wasn't there?
Yeah, we had, um, there was, there were, the entire grade level span was represented by, um, five different principals and also, um, Dylan's participation. And it was really felt that when we looked at the state board maximums, that there was a really key developmental difference between kindergarten and one through three. And again, a very big developmental difference between four, five, and six, eight. And wanted to respect that, and so, and also wanted to be clear and transparent that in those different grade levels, that, um, that there would be, there would be a, a specific intention to have our optimum be, um, a little bit less than had you just taken the below twenty and below twenty-five kind of guidelines that are in the state rule. And feeling that that's the quality education that, um, that voters have supported, that we work in and operationalize year in and year out. And it also takes some of that global averaging out and allows us to, to do some real focused area. Again, recognize that as a large four thousand student district, the number of kindergarten classes is significant. So when we start looking at an average, um, you know, to add a student or subtract a student with the number of, we have eight kindergarten sections at Essex Town. We have one in Westford, and then we have, I think there are nine, or, or, yeah, around that, in between the Hiawatha and Summit. So, you know, the, just the number, again, kinda drives us up to be kind of surprisingly large. So I, I think it's, we're around, we're coming close to around sixteen kindergarten classrooms, fifteen, sixteen kindergarten classrooms. So those averages can work out pretty easily for us.
Questions?
With the configuration that's before us, um, the present staffing is meeting those needs, or is there a decrease, increase?
I would say it's meeting. Um, I think that this is work that we need to do going into budget season. Hence the timing of working on this. Um, it's definitely, I need the data collected for that. I can say it's probably, and that it's happening, and those principals were sitting around the table discussing it, but I can't for sure answer that. That is definitely information that we need.
Fair enough.
Any other questions or comments? Diana?
This will be added to our, uh, policy book online?
Yes.
It, it will be, um, it will be nested inside or subordinate to the actual policy. But we will be creating a, a naming convention that we'll be able to index down. Uh, if they're not a standalone policy, then they'll be nested in with the policy that they're related to.
Beth?
I'm just wondering if, um, not remembering what the guidelines were for Essex Town, how does this recommendation differ from what previously existed?
In Essex Town?
In Essex Town and CCSU, so.
Yeah.
Does this represent, um, a dramatic shift from what both of the districts had previously?
It is exactly what Essex Town had. Um, and it's a little shift from CCSU, and I think, um, my assumption is due to the fact that the K through three was clumped together before, so the number seventeen, it was a little, it was one higher. Um, it's not much off. And then three through four in CCSU, which was clumped differently, um, is, was seventeen. And then four through five was twenty, and six through eight was twenty-two, so that was the same. A little different, um, in Westford, but much, not much off.
Pretty simple.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that you know this already, but one of the issues that I remember is that when parents saw these guidelines, it was not representative of the experience of their student. So the averages, I think, are helpful for planning and for budgeting, but oftentimes you'll meet a, a parent who says, my kid has way more than eighteen students in their class, or whatever it might be. So, um, sometimes the translation of this to the real-world experience in the classroom can raise a lot of questions for parents.
Well, and the word average is really important.
Right, exactly.
I, I can tell you, Brendan, from the reality, um, being on the Prudential Committee, there were times when a kindergarten class might be lower than we had planned. So it wasn't just higher numbers. Sometimes it was, could be a little off-putting 'cause we had planned money, and then you'd have lower. But also at Fleming for a couple of years, we had, uh, really high class sizes. And we added staff, but the reality was by the time you did your October count, there were so many, uh, move-ins that hadn't been, um, that we couldn't have planned for. So it just, I, I went to an open house one time, and it blew me away 'cause I knew we had planned on maybe twenty-two kids in a classroom. And then when I saw those desks and talking to teachers and seeing it, the reality is there's a lot of move-in and move-out. And, uh, I don't remember it being like that, you know, before these last few years.
Kim?
I think, um, you may have been with us, Brendan Stell, when we had to off, off-cycle add a teacher in August.
Right.
Because, in, again, in sort of that, I don't know, it would be a third grade year, a fourth grade year. It's completely unexpected bubble, and it caused us to really, um, subsequent years, it happened a couple of years in a row, once at a kindergarten, and once at a third grade. Um, and we were riding the razor's edge on our class sizes at the higher end. So it really necessitated the addition of a teacher at a, on, a more challenging time to get an educator. So we were, um, careful in subsequent years to say, if we already know we're at razor's edge, what are we anticipating in coming years, if not this year, to bring ourselves closer to the optimum on class size? Because certainly while the averages were keeping us in line, any class individually didn't feel as though it was keeping with the spirit. And there had been times as we budgeted that we would really wanna understand a little bit more about why that felt better than spreading it out differently, and not to challenge the deployment of resources, but to really better understand how classrooms where we're riding at the top end, um, how are those, what are the plans for support to have that feel okay? Or certainly if we were going over the maximum by design because of some teaming that was happening at the middle school. It was intentional, and those teams were asking that they remain intact and that additional services were brought to support that, whether it was a, a coach for a literacy or whatever, the intention being that that was more targeted to the team that was a little higher in number. So, um, you, I'm sure, remember it well, Brendan, and it's just, I guess, the matter of being flexible. But recognizing sometimes that we need to make harder decisions as boards to not ride the razor's edge at the time that we're at budget, to not have it be something that we have to react to later and, um, learned.
I, I get, I think, uh, a couple of good points just to, to share on the conversation as well, that this is a conversation trigger. It's not, it doesn't dictate action for the district, the board, or the administration. But it, it really triggers what could be a hard conversation to raise as we're looking at it during budget. It works on a longer-term perspective, so we have to look at those bubbles. It, it'll, it gives us some math, a data point, but we need the whole perspective. And then finally, as it does start to scratch at, there are multiple ways of balancing student population inside of schools as well as inside of grade level. And so districting or school assignment, you know, is an issue that, that could come up. Is that we may have the perfect number, but when we break it down by community or location or so forth, that the number doesn't become, doesn't stay perfect. So we'll have to work through that as, as we go.
Great. Okay, let's move on to our team updates, communication.
Voices for Education is our, is our update. We are, uh, we're well underway. We're, we're two, uh, sessions into our, our four-session, um, community conversation around the vision. Um, Kim and Brian jump in. I think they're going really well. That we've gotten really wonderful feedback about how these are going. And, um, the steering committee met last night to talk about what happens after these, and we have now formed some teams. One of them is, is working really on the future, what happens after these. One of them is is working really on the future, what happens after these conversations and how do we align it with what the district is doing. And thankfully Brian is in that group, so that helps with the alignment piece. So thank you Brian for that. We also have a celebration of these conversations and a big opportunity to hear what themes came out of them and what and what um rose to the surface across all of these conversations. And that's happening on November twenty-eighth at um EJRP, I believe. It'll it it is from six thirty to seven thirty. We will certainly send out information there um about that, but would invite all of you to attend that and really get a firsthand uh telling of what what came out of these conversations. Um and then the next thing is the that the Voices group is coming to this board on December fifth to give to give a r- a a formal report about what's happened and what's going to happen then in the third year of the grant. Just to remind everybody, this is uh we're getting to the end of year two of the three-year grant that's funded by the Nellie May Education Foundation. Um and that's where we are.
Questions from the.
I think the only thing I would add is um the profound impact in sharing facilitation with a student. So there are adult and student facilitator teams and that has been amazing as a co-facilitator, but I think it is really having an impact in the conversations. And we have a number of students, I think in each group along with a diverse, you know, representation of adults. And at each week, I think the trust level is growing and the voices are finding their way and are balancing themselves and really I think learning. It's it's pretty remarkable and if it has the effect of sort of shifting culture, so this becomes, what's the next thing that needs these kind of conversations in a way that we're building capacity um and interest in having this be an avenue or something, maybe not a four-week thing, but um I think the students are are really stepping up and helping us learn and be better. I bet they'd be pretty ripe for, you know, maybe not another four-week thing, but I'm just gonna keep saying that. It's a big, it's a big commitment, but just a culture shift. It's it's pretty cool.
That's great. I look forward to the eighth. Oh, yes. Other her comments or questions for Liz? Patrick, anything you would want to add?
Oh no, I could lose if I'm taking a point on this. Voice for Education knows October is my busy month, so yeah.
But you're doing the the takeaways and we appreciate that. Okay, um Superintendent of evaluation.
Yes, um first of all, thank you Diane for some of your additions on our grammar and things we missed on the job description. It was nice to have someone take an interest and uh another eye on things. We met today and I believe Beth will be uh sending out by tomorrow, hopefully, or tomorrow afternoon
Maybe tonight.
uh the finished uh job description and then the mapping that we did on the evaluate, on the evaluation tool. And then the hope is that you'll receive those two items, look them over very carefully. And then we are going to be asking uh for feedback for the next meeting.
I think we'd be looking for approval of the job description and uh
The first uh week uh.
and approval of the tool, the first meeting in November.
November, so we can carry on with the evaluation. I I think it's gone very well and Martha, kudos, has done a lot of work. And Beth uh did a lot of research on uh pulling job descriptions from all over. So it's been worthwhile doing, I think interesting.
And I would just add that we will be doing a formative evaluation in November. It will be based partly on the job description and will be using the tool that you'll be getting to do that. But it will also be based on Beth's hundred-day work plan. Um so we'll be asking Beth to make comments on how she see she's done on the that hundred-day plan and then whether she thinks she thinks she's accomplished the goals of that plan. And then Beth will be establishing a new set of goals for the remainder of this school year. And those will be incorporated into the summative evaluation that we'll do toward the end of June. Okay?
Great.
Alright, good. And this may not be our tool forever, but I think it's a um reasonable tool to start with. Okay, state and local updates. Several of us are going to the PSBA meeting Thursday and Friday. Some of us are just going one day, some are going both, so that should be interesting. I did wanna say that we got two letters from Rebecca Holcomb um along with a lot of data on ratios that frankly my computer would not open in a way that I could read. So I, one of the things that I'll be talking with Beth and Brian about um for a future agenda is taking a look at the various ratios that the state has for the district and um making sure that the administration has verified to the degree possible the accuracy of those ratios. I think what you read in the letter is that there's an expectation that ratios are gonna be a big part of the conversation in my pillar this winter. So the last thing we need is um incorrect numbers for our district. Anything else on the state and local update?
I think maybe just piggybacking off of that is that the equalized pupil um the weighted value is an area that was supposed to have had some attention around a study that the AOE I don't think had the capacity for, so that study isn't happening. And I think um that will be important that that get attention in looking at these ratios. But what I understood most recently is that the AOE does not have the resources for that study. And so they sti- they declined to be able to do it. And so um that may be an issue where the weights are not really deemed to be appropriate or at least mitigating the effects well enough or reflecting the actual expense at different categories to deliver education for those weights, so.
Since, yeah, since nineteen ninety-seven, the only thing that changed in those weights was the relative weight between a secondary um students and non-secondary students. And originally the secondary students had a twenty-five percent weight and that went down to thirteen. But aside from that, there hasn't been any adjustment in, is it really twenty years? It is. That's certainly a record for funding for in our state. Was was changed once, but not in a major way. Um, okay. So who um next, I agenda items for the next meeting? Anything beyond, I mean, you remember that we mapped our calendar for the year and so we always go to that. Beth, do you want to tell us what's on the tab?
So we have on our November, November, November um is the formative Superintendent Evaluation, Transportation and Voices for Education Report. So the transportation, Brian will be at our first meeting in November, so um.
And the Voices is.
December now.
That that's a December now, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um are there any, are there any things that
I can still look there.
um folks wanna add for agenda items? Okay, um takeaways. Well, one thing we should put on that agenda is a report how from the VSPA. Especially with regard to the resolutions that we spent a fair amount of time on that many of us went to the regional meeting about. So it will be um important to see how that uh plays out at the end of the meeting.
I I'll just, um I'm just noticing an email we all probably received earlier today that provides a link to um a live stream of the annual meeting, which is not necessarily the most fun part of the two days or the most engaging of it. It is often quite engaging, but it is not necessarily the most efficient part of the two days.
Yeah.
Um that being said, it will re- it will stream the full conversation that's happening regarding the resolution. So and the other topics on the agenda for the annual meeting. But um I just, I think everybody got it as board members, so you can find that link. And if you can't be there in person, you can certainly join the the meeting. And in future years, it, this is a test almost, to be able to see if we are able to in future years allow for remote participation and voting at that meeting. Um and you know, we're basically trying to make sure we've got the technology and capability to do that. So if someone is fully participating remotely and able to engage in the conversation, they can vote. And that is a a longer-term prospect, but this is a test and then hopefully next year could be actualized. Yeah.
Okay. Takeaways, I think we've got at least two big ones.
Ratification.
Ratification of the contract and um the the
Presentation from my.
Just DMG um report, special, well, I guess it's on struggling students. Is that how we're supposed to refer to it?
Yeah, it was the name of their.
Standing in strength and in best practice supports for struggling students.
Yeah. Do we have a third thing that we'd like to highlight? Maybe you could just talk about the Voices for Education conversation.
Yeah, you could invite people to the twenty-eighth event and make sure, I mean, that was a quick community event.
Yes, that's true. Give it on people's calendar.
But I'll have to repeat details before we.
We'll probably repeat that a couple of times.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Anything else? Alright, then I will entertain a motion that we move into executive session to discuss um employee negotiations, contract negotiations and personnel issues.
At what time?
Eight sixteen. Half. Eight sixteen.
Eight sixteen. All soloed.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposing. Great. Thank you everyone and we'll turn to the conference room.